Nine is, where y'all going?
I think I got it out of your way.
What's that?
Look at all those sheets you're saving Shannon, trees, we're a tree community and you're saving trees.
Ready?
That's like forty seven less sheets per packet.
All right, you ready?
Ready.
Ready, Josie, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Josie's virtual. Hi, good evening, I'm going to call the regular Senator and City Council meeting in order from May ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Shortest mission.
Uh, everyone in attendance, please rise and join me in the. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, be leaders.
Please remain standing for prayer. Our Father in heaven, the power heads at this time, and we give you thanks, Father, for our many blessings. We're thankful for the opportunity that we have to gather this evening and tend to the, the business of the city. We ask that you will bless us to to make good decisions. Uh, we are thankful for the workers that we have, we're thankful for the council members and the mayor, and the opportunity that we have to serve the citizens of this community. I ask again that thou would watch over us this evening if I say these things, only in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette, Justin Cowgar, here, he taking him up, here, Josie Reed.
Here.
Aaron Warren, here, and Mr.
First on the agenda is approvals of the city council meeting minutes from April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and they've been in Dropbox now for a couple of weeks. I don't know if anybody had a chance to review them. Uh, somebody make motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Time. You got what you need, Tom?
I do.
All right. All in favor? All right, you want to pose?
Aye.
All right, next is acknowledge and receipt of the Senator Water Sewer Commission meeting minutes from March twenty-first, planning commission meeting minutes from April fourth and April eighteenth, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board minute minutes from March sixth. Someone like make motion, knowledge receipt of those?
Some move.
Make motion? And a second, all in favor? Anyone opposed? You're you're in favor, right, Josie?
Yes.
Okay, it came in delayed, all right. All right, next is uh, our financial report, and I'm gonna have Shannon come up and she's made you a copy of of the report. Have her briefly go over it.
Good evening. So we are a little more than a quarter of the way through the year at thirty-three percent of the year. Um, our revenue is currently sitting at thirty-two percent. Um, and we are sitting at twenty-nine percent of our expenditures, and you always want your expenditures less than your revenue, so I think we're sitting good right now. Um, I checked on our investment and we had a gain for the month of April of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty dollars, twenty-two cents. So our investment is actually doing really well, and the last um, thing I put on there, we started collecting on our ambulance billing. So it started mid-April, um, as you can see on here, we've collected about fourteen thousand eight forty-seven. I think I put another five in today, so it's gonna ramp up, it's just ambulance billing does take a lot of time to get the revenue from it, but it's gonna end up being.
We'll offer like balanced billing for that, or is it like you have to pay it on the front, or how's that word?
For the ambulance billing? I I will have to check in, not that. It's it's the third-party biller.
And once we get this amount, it's that's ours, we're not having to pay.
That's ours, we don't. Do you pay an invoice? I think it was about like eleven hundred or so, but yeah.
Remember? On how much is, what is the that we, the third-party charges us for the billing for the ambulance? Remember?
It's a percentage.
I wanna say it's less than ten percent.
Just say seven is what our.
I think Miss is right, about seven percent.
Does that take care of all of it?
It's worth.
Yes.
Every penny that we pay on that. Less than.
Anybody got any questions for Shannon?
Good job, Shannon.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Shannon, I would like to say thank you, Shannon, for answering my questions in such in such short notice. I appreciate you.
Welcome, thank you.
All right, so someone like make a motion to accept the financial report and also the court report, which is in the Dropbox.
So moved.
And we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is department reports, they're all in there and all the department heads are here, you have any questions for them? All right, I'm hearing none, so next is public comment. Uh, if someone like to make public comment, uh, please, now, this is limited to three minutes, and you can speak about anything, uh, this is not a question-answer session, but we'll hear your comments. So with that, uh, it will be time for three minutes, when before you start, when you give your name and address that we're, you have it for a minute.
Uh, yes, Thomas C. Lux, fourteen twenty-one, fourteen road. This is our mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, purpose of this address is to inform. My opinion, American government at all levels is a team sport. Analogy, football. You have a playbook in football, you have to study it, you have to know it, every play you have to know. You have to go to practice. So if you don't know the playbook, you don't go to practice. On game day, are you surprised that you don't get to play in the game? Of course, that's a rhetorical question, now let me give you context. Last month, an individual made a claim. Claim, Senator Tim police used excessive force. The key document concerning excessive force is Graham versus Connor decided on May fifteenth nineteen eighty-nine. Chief Justice Rehnquist delivered the opinion of the court. When a person claims a police used excessive force during an investigatory stop, or Terry stop, they're synonymous, Terry versus Ohio, or an arrest, or other type of seizure, the claim must be reviewed using subjective reasonableness, that's in quotes, that's the standard. Standard is under the Fourth Amendment, not, not, not a standard substantive due process. I would love for you to agree with my opinion. But if you can, is my hope that we can be civil towards each other. I will do all within my power to be civil, I will do all within my power to be reasonable. But if you can't, I will, if you won't, I will, and I will carry on regardless.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Is it? Anyone else? Okay, public comments closed, so so next. Okay, all right, I get, all right, so next is a public hearing for sewer capacity fee increase, uh, this was published in the paper for two weeks in a row, uh, by the Water Sewer Commission, Malcolm got it published for us to hold a public uh, hearing before we consider ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, which is adjusting the sewer rate capacity fee. I'll just put on a screen, just, you know, so you can see, these are the proposed fees, uh, which we already have a fee, fees in schedule, and this is for developers. This is not for the general public, this will not change the general public's uh, bill whatsoever. This is this for an impact fee for for new homes. And new service, so uh, with that, I, with something like make motion up to public here. Second, and a and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, the floor is open, if anybody wants to make any comments on this. Second call for any public comments. Third and final call, all right, someone like make a motion to close the public here.
So moved.
And we have a second? Anybody?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so before we start, uh, with something like make motion to read ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, twenty-nine, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, and twenty-two by title.
Oh man.
We have a motion, we have a second? Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowgar?
Yes.
He taking him up?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
Yes.
Something like make motion to suspend a rule requiring a read on three separate occasions, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight and twenty-nine. We have a motion, we have a second? Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowgar?
Yes.
He taking him up?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Elon.
So up is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, and uh, Bob Anderson, and also Melvin Cuffelt from the Water and Sewer Commission here with us, and uh, Malcolm, the superintendent's here with us also. I believe Bob gave a very good presentation at our last meeting on this, actually, I think you were ready to pass it that night if we can get a special meeting, so uh, I don't know if you have any more questions, they're here uh, to address questions if you want, this is a discontinuation from the last meeting. Does anybody got any questions for Bob, or Mel- Melvin, or Malcolm? Not hearing any.
No.
Councilor.
All right, ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight, in order to amend the incentive code, section ten point one, two, three, two, adjusting sewer capacity fees and for other purposes.
Someone will make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight.
I'm in.
And a second, roll call.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowgar?
Yes.
He taking him up?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Elon?
Yes.
Uh, this next order is twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, uh, I'm gonna ask that we table this. We have been in contact with Huber Mitchell to get additional uh, easement. They weren't ready to provide that this time, so I don't think we're ready to talk with it. So I'd like make motion.
Make motion to uh, table twenty twenty-three, twenty-nine.
We got a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is order, or resolution, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one. Uh, I came to the council several months ago, and you know, told you I was gonna apply for a grant for McKissick Trail Phase Two, uh, and we did receive five hundred thousand dollars, we have to match uh, twenty percent of that, which we have the funds available. All of this is, is really just basically signing the agreement, we've already done all this, so they have sent me a forty-one-page agreement, which is attached, and that's all we have to do with this one, just let me sign it and, you know, get the funding and move on. So anybody got any questions?
Federal aid project resolution, resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two-one, a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Centerton to utilize federal aid funds for the following city project, McKissick Trail Phase Two.
Someone make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one.
Move.
Second.
And a second, roll call.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowgar?
Yes.
He taking him up?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Elon?
Yes.
All right, this last resolution's twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two, this is allowing, allowing the city uh, to apply for a outdoor parks recreation grant of fifty fifty grand. Uh, we can apply for up to two hundred and fifty thousand, and then we match two hundred and fifty thousand. This would be all part of the twenty twenty-four budget, as far as the matching funds, and we have the funds available in the in the parks fund. Uh, what we wanna do with this, with this is to improve the facility on the corner of Seba and Keller. What is where our dog park is right now, we have a trail, what we like to do is put some playground equipment, some restrooms, uh, also BMX track. I believe that was, that was the remainder of it, right?
BMX truck's already been approved.
That was a pump track, right? The other one's a pump track.
I was working out both right there?
Yeah, well, no, the other one's down the street, it's down uh, off of Nomad Road, down by the cemetery. But what would be nice about this too, if we had the restrooms, there is a trail that runs right behind all those houses, and they can walk right back to the park if they need a restroom, it's like, you know, probably just a block or two away, so, because we couldn't put a restroom on the other park, it's not enough room. But this is just trying to develop that park, we have, the city owns eight acres there, and it's turned into a very nice park.
You know, the dog park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are they gonna run a bike trail back there?
There is it, Anthony?
No, 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 like, like, from, I mean, like, connects connector. Pay attention.
Yes, it's hard to hear back there.
Are they gonna build a connector, like a bike trail somewhere to that part of Seba, I mean, there's a lot, you got West Ridge on the backside, you got Seba with Diamond Estates, like, is there gonna be a bike trail anywhere?
At some point, it should go all the way east to connect to Bentonville's trails.
But where would it tone in Centerton, so you got Seba, Keller?
That's the whole, my whole vision with developing, what he's talking about, is that making Centerton's trailhead is right there. That's why I wanna add bathrooms.
Be the start of it?
Yes.
So would it connect over Bliss, or are you gonna do it at Seba?
It'll go east to head.
Never eat sour worms, I don't know.
Towards Bentonville, towards west, it'll hit, should head east that way, connect down Gambel, go all the way.
You trail back.
But yeah, there's trail started already.
It's right back there, go, you're right behind the house.
So behind the houses, it'll connect to the pump track and it continue east.
Down Seba, because Seba runs into dirt road, right?
Half mile.
Go right or straight?
Quarter mile, half mile.
Straight on Seba, like on the dirt road?
If you go behind the houses, well, two rows, it goes between the houses and go all the way east.
Oh, you're talking about the Rashcolton houses?
Yes.
It's in the middle?
Yes.
A little pond, okay.
Yes, we, there's intentions of bit connecting to Bentonville down Seba, Allen Road, all that other stuff.
We need to check out some lining eventually, then.
Eventually, yes. Yeah, we just wanted to improve that, and you know, get get some more facilities.
Is this um, will this include like a sign or something?
I, there should be a playground there, parking lot, there will be signage there, there will be a frisbee golf, there will be black racks. Uh, the existing dog park is there, we're gonna improve the trail, BMX trail will go towards the backside, and there will be a full-out uh, playground.
I'm just thinking, there's a lot of stuff right there, it'd be really nice to have some kind of nice sign.
Yes, ma'am.
That says all of that, and I didn't know if this grant that we're applying for would include that, or later down the road.
They included ten thousand for a new sign. But um, and all the parks, I want to do more vertical signs, kinda like what Bentonville's doing, um, that are more visual appeasing, and they use those red ones that we're using now for the rules and display inside the park itself.
At some point, should we look at taking the bike trail west, almost to one or two, because we're gonna have Harps, Walgreens, all of that, and then the city hall eventually, and the Mars, I'm just thinking.
Well, all the new.
South.
All the new subdivisions and all the new uh, sidewalks and the master street plan has trailed on each side, one side or the other, depending on what type of road.
You think there will be one that goes Seba to Keller or Bliss?
There is a master trail plan, yes.
Right, I was gonna say master.
You have master trail plan, and it does, our intentions are connecting all that, working with planning.
I'm just throwing this out there for future state, if you put bathrooms there, is there room, eventually, like, if you had a food truck or two out there?
Uh.
Dog park is right now?
Absolutely, there'll be enough parking on the other side where the bathrooms are to have a trailer.
I was talking about one that's open like one day a week, you have two hours.
And just.
Permanent?
No, not permanent, are you thinking permanent?
Well, no, something that, I mean, they could seasonally put it out there, and I think.
For a ballgame or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's events and everything else, there'd be plenty around.
The trailhead, that could just be a great hub for someone to stop by, and get to know the local Centerton business, I mean, what?
Ideally, to have events there and startup trails and bike, bike events and everything else, um, with the pump track being to walk down and there, the BMX trail there, it's it's ideal. And then we'll have some more room where the parking is now, where the dog park is at, because we're not gonna have parking over there.
Who maintains where that wood, the woods are at there, by the Rashcolton? You know, the trees right there by the gravel parking lot?
Uh, we do.
That's us, that's our park.
That's where the BMX trail's gonna go, that's why we thinned out all the trees, um, that's also where the playground's gonna go.
That gonna, that BMX, I know we've talked about it last year, is that going in this year for sure?
No, next time.
Next.
The pump track would be the show.
The pump track is already started, we've already made a first payment on that.
I mean, it's a grant for next year.
Right, okay.
Yeah, this is all setting up for next year's plan, and the BMX trail will come back and ask for it next year.
I keep asking, I keep hearing for BMX track, so I was wondering if that was gonna be this year.
Well, it's a nine-month project that they even to foresee out, we have to start nine months in advance just to get them here, like even the pump track, they don't start until August range.
I thought we were talking about it last year, but I guess not.
Card days is on the bump track.
Yeah, we've been talking about it for.
BMX.
Yes, ma'am.
And they had the money, but you just wanna try to maximize by, you know, using, matching this grant, double what we wanna do.
Or even connect those trails.
We're fine.
We getting any questions?
Parts have looked great, by the way, I've had some residents talk with parts.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a headache.
What, okay.
What amount are we going for, is it just one that?
I'll go for the whole two fifty.
In the whether we apply, and then they tell us how much we're eligible.
Yeah, I I mean, we, so what happens next, we apply, if we get, uh, we have to go to Jacksonville, where we've been going, make a presentation to a board, or's a board, it reviews us. A lot of times, you don't get it the first time, but we got the second time, that's how we got grant for the splash pad, it's the same kind of grant, same thing with that ball fields up there, the initial grant was one of these. Oh, and we've got all those closed out now, so this opportunity came, let's throw it out there again, and, you know, see if we can maximize all our money and just get some more.
Gosh, I'd love to take some of the, what is it, the funds uh, for the restaurants, um? I'd love to take some money eventually, when we have lights that run down a trail and promote the businesses that give money to the city and say, you know, come try this, or that, I just really think it would help with tourism slash people visiting our.
Well, we've got ideas of working on that, too. It'll take every bit of that money to accomplish Keller and Seba, it'll take a full half million to accomplish everything, based on pricing now.
Any more questions? I get them? Good. Now, you know your questions, Justin?
Absolutely.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two-two, a resolution authorized in the city of Centerton, Arkansas to make application to the Arkansas Department of Parks and Tourism for assistance developing recreational facilities.
I'm gonna make motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two. A motion, we got a second?
I thought I heard keep, sorry.
Any more discussion? Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette? Excuse me, Justin Cowgar?
Yes.
He taking him up?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Aaron Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Elon?
Yes.
All right, this next, there's no more resolutions orders, but this next uh, order of business is avoid, we're having a tree giveaway uh, on June first and second, uh, and we got a grant for the trees, however, the cost of the trees is over twenty thousand uh, with tax and freight, so, you know, since it's an expenditure over twenty thousand dollars, I have to have city council approval for that. That's what we're requesting here, like I said, we got a tree grant fund, it's funding it, so I just said that okay to make this purchase. Like make our motion? A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
All right, and this last order of business I have, uh, last month, we approved an agreement with S and K Dirt Works to do some work on Edge, Edgewood Road. And I believe it was about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars, however, uh, needed some more subgrade. Correct, I'm looking at it, might say what's wrong, as they got in there and decided that we needed some more work done, so we, this is a change order, move that from the twenty-four thousand up to thirty-seven thousand one sixty-six.
There diamonds in there?
You wouldn't know if there's any diamonds.
Went from a.
Thirteen thousand dollars.
Went from a gravel road to a paved road.
This dirt must be indicated.
Really good.
I don't know.
I.
I mean, it looks, the road looks really good right now.
Yeah, so we just gotta approve the change order.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the change order, we got a second?
Yeah.
Second, is that Mr. Second? Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, do we have any other business? Yeah, I'm not hearing any.
What is question now, is that all right? Yeah, yeah. Uh, sir, what was, I'm sorry, was his name, I didn't bring a pen.
Young man right here? I think he's talking to you.
Yeah, in front of Melvin, yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, officer.
Uh? Are you, are you referring to the?
Well, come on up here so they can hear.
And uh, Ron, and Ron last month? Was it the gentleman that walked out while you were speaking last?
Yes.
I saw the video on YouTube, I just wondered if that's what you're referring to.
That's exactly it.
Being.
What else would you like to do?
Well, I mean, I I'm just trying to understand, you you stopped speaking last month, and then, I mean, I wanted to welcome to have the time last year.
Uh, so that ruling was made in nineteen eighty-nine. I was in the security policeman in the United States Air Force, I went to the technical school in October of eighty-nine. Served nineteen years as a police officer. Use of force is ingrained, that ruling changed the whole way you do law enforcement. So the point that I'm trying to make is that if you're gonna complain, you have to know the place, you can't complain about a police officer who is following the law.
Okay, so you're still, okay, that that's what I was misunderstanding, what you, what angle you were trying to.
I see the angle that I'm coming from, nobody, it's so frustrating to listen to the news, and nobody knows about Graham versus Connor or Terry stop. Okay, there's different reasons that a police officer will respond, the first thing they have to do is get control of the situation. It's impossible to get control of the situation if the subject person you're talking to wants to have control of it, and wanna guide what the police officer does.
No, I appreciate that.
So in that ruling, it's about ninety pages, they go over that, and they explain that the officer has a right to control the situation. And if you go deeper into it, putting handcuffs on somebody is one of the first things you do to control the situation.
No, I I agree with you, I I just wanna make sure I didn't misunderstand, it's not, everyone loves the edited video that's put on YouTube to go YouTube famous, I just wanted to understand where you're coming from.
Well, I agree with you. The context is, I had three minutes, I just wanna get across a point, all you have to do is a council member say Graham versus Connor.
Yeah, I guess.
Reasonable officer. Okay, thank you.
No, thank you for coming again, sorry you didn't get to finish last time, and like, you're in the middle of sentencing, walked out, and then you kinda just ended it, so, appreciate it.
I'm available anytime for private conversations, I can, I can.
Okay. Do we have that data on that investigation?
I have.
I mean, if we don't, it's not big deal.
No, we.
I think I saw what I needed to, but I just. We got it, it was a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's it's been happened. All right, we got other business.
I just wanna remind people, and I I know that it might have been mentioned last meeting, but uh, you know, we've got the volunteer orientation coming up for on the thirteenth from one to three, so you know that some of us were vested in that, so there's an opportunity to get out, and I'm I'm sure if uh, others were here, volunteering is just not petting the dogs, you gotta realize you might be cleaning kennel, that's the biggest thing from volunteers get out there that.
Bill, are you sending that out to the uh, residents who, you know, were concerned over everything, just to kinda?
I posted it online, I didn't, I don't, didn't send it to anybody, I mean, because most of the people we're concerned were, were best pet, were best friends, and they're, that's who's hosting the the facility for us.
Okay.
And I did send it to y'all, too, right? Okay, I wanna make sure, I thought I did. All right, uh, I don't hear any other business, anything else? So we have, Keith, Keith, we got coffee to bear on May twentieth, nine AM, I know it's West graduation, but I.
It's at ten o'clock.
Yeah, so we can have coffee and then go to graduation.
Yeah, if you leave coffee with them, you're not gonna get seen.
So, let's see, like, all right, and then our work session is May twenty-second, right, right here, six o'clock, and that was something like make motion to adjourn.
Can I make a question real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Question, can I make a?
Yes, you can make a question.
The work session, what is, is it's a continuation of what we?
Yeah, what what we like to do, and me and Lorraine's gonna meet tomorrow to have a game plan with them, we're gonna have a continuation, and then that should be the last time we talk for now. We're gonna probably ask you as the council to direct planning commission, because that's that's who reviews the land use plan and the master street plans, and you know, and and have them look at that, and ask it back here for.